Good evening. Welcome to the June 6, 2022, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. A big crowd tonight. Well, thanks for being here. I will call this meeting to order, and I'll ask you all to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. First up is a proclamation in recognition of Rotary International. Do we have a specific representative here for the Rotary Club?
We have at least one.
There you are.
Several of them.
Excellent. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read this, and then I'll, we'll come do pictures, and if you'd like to say anything, you can. Whereas Rotary International was founded in 1905 by a group of Chicago businessmen, so that professionals with diverse backgrounds could exchange ideas and form meaningful lifelong friendships. And whereas, over time, Rotary's reach and vision has extended to humanitarian service, thus exemplifying its motto, "Service Above Self." And whereas Stillwater is a home to three Rotary Clubs: Stillwater Centennial, founded in 1991, Stillwater Frontier, founded in 1975, and Stillwater Rotary, that recently celebrated its 100th anniversary of being founded in 1921. And whereas all of these clubs demonstrate service above self by being actively involved in meaningful projects such as mobile meals, food sacks for elementary school children, support of Empower in Stillwater, and numerous international projects. Therefore, I, William Joyce, on behalf of the citizens of Stillwater and the city council, want to express our gratitude and appreciation to all Rotarians in our city, and to offer special congratulations to Stillwater Rotary on its centennial. Let's take a picture. Rotarians unite. Oh. Forgot my PIN. I'm gonna get fined for that. Next up, we have a presentation from the Stillwater Tennis Association.
Good afternoon, Mayor Joyce, city councilors, deputy city manager Reams, and city staff. My name is Henri Wahara. I'm the president of the Stillwater Tennis Association, and I'm here with some of our board members. Some didn't, had prior commitments, so they couldn't make it, but we have our treasurer, Ruth Walker. You can stand, say hi. And our secretary, Suzanne Collier. And some of our youth outreach board members, John Nash and Ajia Dulcev. We're here to thank the city for its continued support of the tennis community, and especially for the work that was done on the four tennis courts at Couch Park that were renovated in 2017, back up to the standards that would be expected of a city our size. We're also here to thank Barbara Bliss, who's, for her continued support. She's been there for us whenever we've needed her help, so we thank her very much. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Stillwater Tennis Association, I'd like to give a really brief introduction. We're a nonprofit, all-volunteer coalition-community tennis association with the mission of promoting the sport of tennis in the greater Stillwater area. We offer playing opportunities to players of all ages and all abilities through our leagues, ladders, tournaments, and clinics. We work with all the tennis programs in town, including OSU, Stillwater Public School System, SASSA, to support them when and where we can. To give you an example, a few years ago, we sponsored and helped run a USTA Women's Pro Tennis Tournament for two years in partnership with Chris Young at OSU. Many of those players have gone on to become top-ranked players on the WTA professional tennis circuit, including our first-year tournament winner, Danielle Collins, who's now currently ranked number eight in the world, and our second-year runner-up, Marie Buskova, who's currently ranked number 64 and moving up the ranks. We just wrapped up our annual meeting and a summer social doubles tournament, where we had 48 players signed up to compete. And our latest program, to increase the youth tennis participation in town, we began to offer last fall, youth tennis, weekly youth tennis clinics, with the help of high school and junior high tennis players serving as assistant instructors. And we had nearly four dozen children ranging in age from seven to 13 participate, and we've gotten, the feedback we've gotten from the parents were extremely enthusiastic, to say the least. The only downside to all this has been trying to fit all this activity onto the four playable courts in town at Couch Park. It's been difficult for us to manage, and obviously, finding a solution to the Sunset Park situation would be very welcome. In 2017, the STA established what's called a resurfacing reserve fund, knowing that we would need money to maintain and repair the Couch Park courts in the future, to prevent the courts from deteriorating, as they have done in the past repeatedly.
with tennis courts around town, and one of several groups in our community that helped
So, for the past few years, we've been depositing $1,000 annually into this fund with expectation
to support special interests and special activities and that sort of thing around Stillwater. So, we greatly appreciate them and everyone who supports what we do here in town.
that Couch Park courts would be resurfaced by 2023.
Okay, that takes us to item four on the agenda, the consent docket.
2023 is nearly here, and we're ready to help the city get this job done by cutting a check
Councilors, questions, items, or motions on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
to the city of Stillwater in the amount of $5,000.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Excellent. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the Tennis Association. Consent docket's approved five to zero.
You actually have a check as well.
Oh, excellent. Takes us to item five, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing on Well, I will say, as a parent of two young kids who'll be participating in tennis this our agenda tonight, and I have one person signed up. summer, I'm excited that, for the work you've done, and we certainly appreciate the support This would be Judy Wagamot. Thank you for being here. you've shown. I'll come down there, and we can take a picture. If you could just introduce yourself, and then you'll have three minutes to comment.
My name is Judy Wagamot. I reside at 1411 North Grandview Court, just south across the street from Skyline Elementary School. And I thank you for having me here, so I can be heard. My concern is the proposed cell tower, I think mentioned in item 8A, and its proximity to the established residence there, and the disturbance of the peaceful and serene surroundings at that location. I think I provided you all with a picture of the small tree grove there that houses many small wildlife, birds, and lot of residents there use it as a walking area, an area to walk through dogs. And my concern is the disruption that would be to the sereneness and the peacefulness of that particular area. And I'm not opposed to 5G networks, but I am opposed to them in a place that would replace green space. And I guess I'm on behalf of all the residents that surround those water-retention lagoons in that area, and backs up to that green space, and all the residents that use the green space, and for all the little critters, that would be displaced also. This kind, this came to my attention about a year ago, when I discovered some stakes that were plotted in that area, right there in that tree area that you see in the picture. And that's just a minimum distance from my backyard fence that you also see in the picture. So, it's a little concerning to me to have a cell tower as my view as I look out my patio. But I know other residents in that area were also concerned because of the proximity to the two schools, Skyline Elementary School and Stillwater Junior High, where children are out playing all the time. My concern is, I'm not sure if, what the noise level would that, would that involve in the equipment that is set with the tower, and the lights on top, and what kind of disruption that might be to the residents. I'm just asking you to think of these things, and to the disruption of the lifestyle that people thought they would be living when they moved to that area.
Thank you so much.
And bought their properties there.
We appreciate you being here and for your comments, and we will address that item later in the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. First up, we have item 7A, receive public comment regarding a request for a closing of utility easement at property addressed as 1201 West Sixth Avenue. This is a CC 22-102. Did we have good notice on this item? Jaclyn.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jaclyn Porter, the city planner. And I'm presenting to you on the first item here is the closing of an easement for Stillwater Medical Center at 1201 West Sixth Avenue. Here's the area map of the location. The hash mark is of the easement. Here's an aerial view. It's just east of the cancer center, and then between that and the parking lot. Here is the site plan. It's all black and white, but again, the hash mark is the proposed easement that is being closed. All current utilities that are going through this easement will be moved to the east utility easement over by Monroe. Does council have any questions for staff?
Just to be clear, the utility relocation costs are borne by the hospital, correct? All right, seeing no further questions, I will open the public hearing at this time. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on 7A, and so I will close the public hearing, unless, Stephen, you'd like to make a comment? Representing the hospital tonight? Thank you, sir.
Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East Eighth, here on behalf of the hospital to answer any questions you had. Like Ms. Porter said, it's a closure of an easement. It's the former Adams Street right-of-way that was closed years ago, an easement put on top of it. Now, as plans have developed for the hospital, they'd like to build in portions of that. So, instead of continuing to close bits and pieces of it, we've worked with Stillwater Electric, Natural Gas, Water Sewer, and everybody else to figure out how we're gonna move those out of there permanently. So, we'll be serving from the north, serving from the south, and everything on-site will be private. So, if there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Councilors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. This time, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask staff to come back up and let us know what the planning commission recommends.
They recommend to approve the closing request.
All right. Councilors, questions, comments, or motion on the item?
Motion to close the utility easement for property located at 1201 West Sixth Avenue?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, but I just want to clarify quickly. I asked you for the planning commission's recommendations, but I don't think, did this go to planning commission?
No, it did not.
Okay, so that's just staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we do have a motion and a second to approve the closing of this easement. There we are. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That takes us to item 5B. Excuse me. My electric agenda. 7B. I'm using the bookmarks. Item 7B, receive public comments regarding the request for a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 11, excuse me, 115 East 12th, from residential single-family to commercial business. This is CC 22-94. Have good notice on this item? Ms. Porter.
All right. As stated, this is a map amendment for 115 East 12th Avenue, from small, single-family residential to commercial business. Here's the area map of the subject property and the hash mark between Main and Lewis on the south portion of East 12th. To the west of the property is a Hart Portrait Artistry and a Headline Barber Shop Lounge, and then across Lewis is the Lincoln Alternative Academy. This is a street view looking south on, from 12th, and there's currently a vacant structure that used to be a welding shop. Here's the current zoning map. The current zoning of the property is small, single-family. To the north and to the south is the same zoning, and then to the west is commercial Here's a picture of the land use map, which is what we use as, to forecast what the community uses will be. Here's a zoomed-in picture of the future land use map. It proposes for a low-density for the subject property and commercials located there to the west. The plan indicates that the neighborhood scale commercial may be found in low-density areas on limited basis. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
Councilors, any questions?
Was the development of the welding shop prior to the zoning code?
Yes.
It's been there a while. I'm sure it wasn't actually a welding shop first, or it looks like a grocery store or something.
Yeah, or something.
Further questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing. And this one, I know we got a recommendation from the planning commission on it.
Yes, we do. Planning commission recommended approval with three to zero.
Councilors.
Move to approve the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission's recommendation. Please vote. That passes with a vote of five to zero. Item 7C, receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone a portion of the property located at 2810 Southwestern Road, from small-lot, single-family residential to commercial general, CC-22-96. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
All right. On the third item, as stated, is a map amendment located at 2810 Southwestern, from RSS to CG. Here's the area map of the subject property. It's between 26th and 32nd Avenue along Southwestern. Here's the aerial map. As you can see from the aerial, this is undeveloped land. Just southeast of the subject property is Fry Farm Subdivision, and to the west is Brighton Here's a street view looking west on Weston. And here's the current zoning map. The subject property is currently zoned, small, single-family, similar zoning surrounds the property, except for to the south is agriculture. Here's the future land use maps. Future land use map is used to forecast development in our community. As you can see, it's proposed to have low-density to high-density across from Western. As stated previously, you can have, in the neighborhood plan scales, of commercial can be used in low-residential areas, in our last case. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
Councilors, any questions? This time, I will open the public hearing. I do have a couple folks sign up to speak on this item. First, I have Jimmy Hill.
I am Jimmy Hill, 2700 Southwestern, owner of the subject property. As has been pointed out already, the comprehensive plan adopted by the city of Stillwater in 2013 does anticipate the likelihood of commercial zoning to some limited degree in that area. I have personally checked with the adjacent landowners to this property and find no objection to the proposal that we have. We feel that the planned development of that area will be very compatible to the 529 residential lots that are planned across the road, across Western to the east. The setbacks required have been noted, that were developed during the planning stage. The relationship to the existing oil well that you see there has been noted. We feel that everything has been considered, and that the planned development of a mini storage unit would be very appropriate and compatible to that area. I know that you will be aware that planning commission has unanimously recommended approval, and we would appreciate your consideration. With respect for your time, I'll limit that to that few words, and try to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Councilors, any questions? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
I also have Marshall Walker signed up.
Good evening, Marshall Walker, 3705 South Woodstone. I'm just gonna reiterate, and I'll be brief also, what Jimmy said, and to go along with the recommendation from the planning commission, that since the residential zoning does allow for commercial scale at a limited basis, that this is, you know, within the plan and consistent with that plan. So, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak, so I will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask Jaclyn to come up and let us know what the planning commission recommends.
Okay. Planning commission recommended to approve on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. Councilors.
Move to approve the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve planning commission's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero.
I just want to say thank you to residents. Sometimes when we sit up here and we see a zoning request like this, and it helps to have some feedback and some thoughtful conversation about your views on that, and so, thank you for, it can be a little intimidating sometimes to come up here, so thank you both for coming up here and doing that.
All right. That takes us to item 7D, receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone properties addressed as 1924, 1930, and 2002 East McElroy Road, from large-lot, single-family residential to small-lot, single-family residential, CC-22-95. Did we have good notice? Ms. Porter?
All right. For my final presentation for you guys, as stated, it is a rezoning from a large lot to small residential. Here's an area map of the three lots of the subject property, between Skyline and Jardoe, north of McElroy. To the south of the subject property, you have Wedgewood Edition and Skyline, and then you have D&amp;M Estate to the west of Skyline Road. And then to the corner of Skyline and McElroy is Brookdale Senior Living Solutions. This is a street view looking north on McElroy, towards 1924 East McElroy. There are currently two single-family structures at this location. One of them is under, is in the middle of doing a remodeling on this. Current zoning map, the large, single-family residence to the east, no, to the north and to the west of the property, and to the east is a smaller, or is commercial, goodness, commercial, and then to the south is small. I just butchered that. All right. Here's a future land use map. As stated, this is forecasting our future development. Commercial is proposed along the north side of McElroy, between Skyline and Jardoe. As commercial is being proposed for future use, the change in zoning to an increase in residential density can be deemed appropriate as existing and proposed land uses are similar in the area. Y'all have any questions for staff?
Councilors, any questions?
So, two of these lots have homes on them already, is that what I understood?
Correct.
But we're gonna rezone those lots for small lot versus large lot?
Correct.
So, does that imply they're gonna subdivide those lots?
They have that option, yes.
All right.
But we have not received anything for that.
Okay. This would allow, instead of having just one house on each lot, that they could make smaller lots and put more houses in the same?
Correct.
Further questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I do have one person sign up to speak, Larry Roy.
Good afternoon. I'm Larry Roy. I'm representing my 90-plus-year-old parents who live at 1819 Linda, just north of the property in question. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for letting me speak. I represent, as I said, Lawrence F. Roy and Jolene Roy, who reside at 1819 Linda. I may have learned something new today. I understood Jaclyn to say that the property just north is zoned as large family. My parents understand the property just north is zoned as agricultural. There are still horses on that property, and it's, if you remember the map, excuse me, it's the long section running east and west, just north of the property in question. The zoning from single-family, large, single-family to small, single-family, I do not speak for or against, but just wanted to make the council aware, and also wanted to go on record, that we do have concerns about the increased water runoff from multiple-family dwellings, plus the concrete footprint that that would involve, and the fact that my parents' property is a lower plane from the land in question. I just wanted to make the council aware that our concern is to make sure that the water runoff does not impact the land that's now agricultural, which does tend to hold water a little bit, anyway. The, I've been told that Stillwater does not have a water engineer that looks at this. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I, again, ask the council to make sure that, or to... or to at least consider that the engineers would look closely at how that water runoff is gonna be managed. I do not think that we have any concerns about the ingress and egress to that property. I do not anticipate that that's gonna affect my parents' land, but my dad has expressed that question to me. That's all I had.
Is there current ingress and egress off of Jardoe or off of McElroy?
My parents' land.
Yeah.
So, the property just north is agricultural. They live just north of that and are, their home is on Linda.
Off of Linda?
Yes. So, into that property, there is a, kind of a common entrance to the west of my dad's home. There's a second home to the west, and then there's the kind of a public driver. I don't know how that was zoned as, whether that is right-of-way. Years and years ago, when they bought this land, it was anticipated that this was gonna be zoned as a residential area, and the man that was gonna do that development died. And so, it was zoned agricultural and then left agricultural when his wife didn't wanna complete that project, and my parents bought that land. So, does that answer your question?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for being heard.
Appreciate it. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak. Do we have a, are you representative of the owner?
Correct, yes, sir.
You can come forward.
My apologies for being a little bit late. I came in Texas tonight just to get up here. We had a project going on over there. So, first of all, the Roy family have been fantastic.
Could you introduce yourself for us, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Saif Alusi. I'm one of the owners of the properties that were mentioned. We actually own land here also on the west side of town. Our residence address is two-zero-zero-two East McElroy Road, for the record. First of all, I just want to commend the Roy family. They actually, as I said in the last meeting, they took care of my mother when she was growing up. She was actually sponsored by the City of Stillwater. They were also supporting her as she was in the American Legion Children's Home. So, it's kind of the weird connection that we have here, and the ironic connection that we know each other in that form. In terms of what we're trying to do there, the two homes that are existing, we're not going to move, damage, do anything like that. We're not seeking to change that aspect. We are currently renovating one of the properties that was in, you know, poor condition, so we're bringing it up to the code standards. With Mr. Roy's concerns about the runoff, you know, building codes of Oklahoma state that we cannot add or deduct from that, from my understanding, from what I hear from my engineers, we just wanna improve the area and bring in more houses in that little section, but do a boutique location and create a pretty environment for that. We're not trying to make it commercial. I know the planned use was for commercial at some point. That's what the planners had thought about, the expectations of where the city was gonna go. However, we don't want that to happen. We see that as a cute neighborhood. We wanna keep it as a neighborhood, and again, we're not going to go in and just tear up all the ground. We plan to, you know, with the existing trees that we have, we plan to build around that so that we have a mature, pretty, acceptable development there. And we're also developing, like I said, we're gonna be developing something else on the west side of town, too. So, again, we're gonna be building relationships with you guys, and, you know, we wanna prove ourselves with this first one that you're giving us. So, is there any questions that you guys would like?
Counselors?
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come in. Oh, and by the way, sorry, just a quick note, your staff has been fantastic. We've actually got local hires now from people here in Stillwater, so we do greatly appreciate the city. So, thank you.
Thanks for saying that. Appreciate it. All right. This time I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask Jaclyn to come back up and let us know what the Planning Commission's recommendation was.
All right. Planning Commission recommended approval of this application, five to zero.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Counselors, comments, questions?
I just want to address the comment that was made about water runoff, and you're exactly right. We cannot build anything in town without making sure we deal with the water issues, and the plans deal with the water issues. So, there will not be, there should not be, yeah, I learned in my business, not speaking absolutes, there should not be any additional impact to your parents' property because the water plan will deal with runoff from this site.
Anything further?
No.
Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to accept Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. All right. That takes us to item eight, general orders. Eight A is presentation of a request from AT&amp;T to lease city-owned property along Manning Street. Melissa Reams.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. This evening, we have representatives from AT&amp;T here with us, and their presentation this evening and their ask is that you consider leasing to them property that is currently owned by the city, and it is in a retention pond. Ms. Walgamot spoke to the location, I think, very well. So, with any, without any further ado, I'll introduce Sandra Robinette with AT&amp;T, and she and her staff are going to bring the presentation to you this evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, thanks for having us. I'm Sandra Robinette. I'm with AT&amp;T, I'm the External Affairs Manager for Northwest Oklahoma to include Stillwater. Tonight, I have the really important people, though. So, our rain engineer, who is Kellen Butler, he's our brains behind building the network. And then we have Kayla Kramer with Branch Communications, which helps in our site development and site acquisition. And then our presenter tonight will be Troy Williams, who is also with Branch, and he can talk to you and answer questions regarding the site built. Come on up, Troy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. My name's Troy Williams. I'm nineteen-hundred north-south Broadway, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven-four-one-one-eight. Had to think about that. AT&amp;T is proposing a hundred-and-twenty-foot monopole. We've been working on this project for quite a while, since mid-two thousand and eighteen, because capacity issues have picked up in the city so much that we can't cover everything with what we have. So, we've worked on a couple different sites, and this site was selected because it's in the green belt or the retention area. And there's already a cell site up there. It's a Sprint site, T-Mobile now, wooden pole, and we'd proposed to put it kind of like right next to that, but we were working with multiple people in the city that's changed a little bit, and they kind of moved us over a little, about three-hundred-and-fifty feet to the east. The site is to enhance cellular, broadband, Wi-Fi, and FirstNet. FirstNet is for first responders' dedicated channel on the cell site, so only the first responders have, they can't be blocked. But here, it's kind of unique because you also have police, fire, ambulance, EMS, Payne County Emergency Management, Payne County Sheriff, and OSU on this FirstNet system. So, there's a lot of people that have, that need access. I was asked about access. Right now, the access is off. It's thirteen-ninety-nine North Manning is the site address technically, but it comes, it comes on the survey that I think you guys have in your package. Is that correct? Do y'all have? Am I supposed to push any buttons?
All I have is a picture.
Oh, is that what I need to do?
Go to right there.
Okay, right there. So, on that picture, the southwest corner down at the, on the street and on Manning Street, shows where the T-Mobile site is, but the entrance, you can kind of see the road that's already there, and we're gonna follow that same road right up to that site, and then kind of go to northeasterly over to the proposed area. And the, previously, we'd put it kind of right next to that T-Mobile site, but we were asked to move it up to the northeast, kind of hidden behind those trees, because it's a big, large clump of trees there. And so, access-wise, we'd have to extend it from that site, or from T-Mobile site over to the northeast. We're trying to add wireless infrastructure to keep up with all the technology, all the devices, everybody's needs, not just talk, it's data now, too. A lot of people still work from homes, and the capacity is the main key. It's full 5G cell tower. It doesn't make any noise. It's a monopole, too. It's a hundred-and-twenty-foot monopole. Monopole structure is, I apologize, I didn't have a picture in it. There's the survey that shows you there. This is a coverage map now of the existing network, which shows the light green and the red, which is no service, on the little dot in the middle, and the others with that site on, you can show that, see the difference in coverage for the neighborhood and the schools, which all use wireless and technology in all their facilities. They do have an emergency generator on site in case power's off for over eight hours. The facility itself has an eight-hour battery backup, so if power's out, at least you can get cell service. They run off DC, so. The tower doesn't have to be lit at the hundred-and-twenty-foot height. It is a fifty-by-fifty fenced compound concealed in the, and locked to hide the equipment, and of course, we landscape around that. Like I said, there's a natural barrier of trees that cover most of it anyway, so that's where, oops, sorry. I believe the biggest thing was the city wanted to discuss this to see kind of if you're interested in leasing city property. You'd done it before, but it's been a while for this area. Do you have any questions? And Kellen's the RF engineer. If you need any technical stuff, I'm just the...
Do you know why the city nudged you northeast from your preferred site?
Moved us over? I don't. Mr. McKinley?
I think it was a little bit for cosmetics.
Oh, cosmetics. I'm sorry. Cosmetics.
People watching on TV will be able to see.
I think it was a little bit of cosmetics, see if we could disguise that a little bit behind that grove of trees that are kind of in that area. So, I think, I believe I can speak for Kellen, that that little bit of jump for us to scooch over there doesn't really affect him utilizing the network and maximizing where we're at, so.
So, is it your intent then to leave that grove of trees in place and build behind it relative to the Walgamot property?
I'm gonna go back to the, right now, the way the survey is, and on this map, we'd have to take, cut about twenty-five feet in the trees, twenty-five feet by twenty-five feet, and the other twenty-five by twenty-five would be outside the trees. So, it'd be kind of nestled in the trees.
So, all she's gonna see is a pole sticking a hundred-and-twenty feet in the air?
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, was it you? I'd have to, we can do what's called a photo sim from her backyard. If she's that low going up, you're probably only gonna see the top because of the close proximity of the trees go pretty much all the way back to her backyard. Is that correct, ma'am?
Can I say something? Previously, when I came out and drove the stakes on that flat, it took about half of that grove of trees, whatever stake, that twenty-five by twenty-five.
Ma'am?
Okay. Okay, sorry.
I appreciate you guys in that conversation, but that's probably not...
No, not here. What I proposed to you, or if y'all are allowed to enter into a lease with AT&amp;T, we can propose it there, or we can move it back over closer to where that other existing monopole or mono wood pole is that's where I had it in the first place. So, we kind of got asked to move there, so anyhow.
So, from a technical standpoint, in terms of coverage, the site initially that you picked was, does what you needed to do?
Perfect.
Okay. Can you co-locate on the existing pole?
No, sir. We, first thing we did was try to do that, and I have a letter from Sprint at the time, now it's T-Mobile purchased Sprint, saying that the pole is not co-locatable. As a matter of fact, Sprint's, or T-Mobile's trying to add stuff on there, and they're gonna have issues, too, because it structurally won't handle it.
So, can we build one pole for you guys both to add to?
Yeah. This tower will be structurally designed for at least four carriers, minimum.
Okay. So, if you build this one, even at that site, they could potentially co-locate onto your pole?
They could, sir.
So, tonight, really, it is more about whether or not we're gonna enter into a lease agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
But want to address location?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm concerned.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I think from a technical, anybody questions from AT&amp;T's technical standpoint? I think the rest of my questions are gonna be about the lease agreement and from our side.
Yeah, I do have one more technical question. One of the issues that Ms. Walgamot raised was health concerns about radio waves, and I don't know how much is fact and how much is fiction versus all the stuff that's out there about radio wave interference and health concerns.
Okay, it's, and it's a great question. Cell towers RF are non-ionizing RF versus the sun, which is ionizing, which is, causes problems. So, I can also get RF to get really technical if you want to, but health and safety, we're well underneath any health and safety concerns, even with all five carriers are on the same site. And that's another reason why you want it a little higher, so you get separation.
Is there, oh, sorry. Is there a permitting process that helps you understand how close it could be to a residential, like what if it falls down or those kinds of things?
Very good question. There is. The ordinance is in place. That's the reason why we kept scooting it where they, we were directed to move over to, is because we meet the setbacks for the city at that location. Now, of course, we meet them at the existing area. What was the other part of that question?
Just the permitting and structural, yeah.
Structural. The monopoles are designed not to come down, first of all. The foundation is the key, and it's quite massive. In an act of God, they are designed to actually fold over and the top touch the bottom. Now, we're talking more Oklahoma F-five tornadoes. The only thing standing was the monopoles. I mean, the houses, buildings, everything, down to rubble. Yeah, so, is it possible? Yes, but unlikely.
For, for the AT&amp;T folks?
On the green patches on the graphic we have, does the city own all of that?
That is correct.
So, we would, could lease any portion of that if we so chose?
Any portion, yes, but the reason why the Sprint site is where it is is because it's kind of up on the hill, and it's, then you got all that drainage and runoff and ponding going on, on the southwest corner pieces especially. So, it'd be up, it'd need to be up similar to where that site is.
How tall is the existing wooden monopole?
I was told a hundred feet, but I think it, I thought it was about eighty. And I can tell you exactly, I should've measured today when I was out there. I've only been out there thirty times and never thought about it after they said you can't go on it, so.
Yeah.
But I'll have that answer for you at the next one.
Well, I mean, this will be taller, but not twice as tall?
Not twice as tall.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a top thing on it, because they've already tried to make adjustments and probably not gonna work.
Well, and their size is what's prohibiting them from adding other carriers, so it's prohibiting them from sharing. So, in our case, we'll be able to share with other carriers at one time. I'm pretty loud.
Yes.
Any further questions for AT&amp;T?
And I might say, the city's had this lease for quite a while. It's been back and forth a few times, too. I don't know if you need a fresh copy, start over, wanna start where we left off?
On the actual agreement?
Uh-huh.
We'll leave that to the city attorney's office.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
So, this evening, we are asking for direction from council as to your pleasure to whether to continue to pursue the lease with AT&amp;T. And I'll be honest with you, I picked this up in the middle. I did not know that they had been asked to relocate within the site itself. We definitely will revisit that as well. But that is what we are asking for this evening, and we don't really...
Are you asking for a specific lease on a specific piece of property, or are you just asking if the council is amenable to you going forward with trying to find a spot in this area somewhere?
Right. And reach a financial agreement with AT&amp;T that is beneficial to the city.
Okay. And what are the steps in the process here? Presumably, we need to approve a lease at some point, but is there gonna be a public hearing? What else happens along this way?
Mrs. Carnley, is this one that we would need to have a public hearing on?
Yes. To be clear, they would still have to go through the plan...
Yes, to be clear, they would still have to go through the planning process. The code requires that these types of, new construction of these types of monopoles, they have to have an SUP. So they would still go through that process. The request of the city tonight is really one of our capacity as landlord. Do we want to lease the land for this purpose? We would probably need to in terms of negotiating the lease terms and reviewing that. Once you lease the land for that purpose, it may have some impact on the planning process as well.
What does that mean exactly?
So, and Beth Ann Childs did review a lease agreement. I did not. I looked at it after her, and it looked to me like some of the terms and conditions in it were that we would do everything in our power, basically, to help with the permitting. And there were some statements in there that, to me, looked more of like an approval outside of our general SUP process. Now, these are just proposed lease terms. We can still negotiate that. But we really felt like it was time to bring it here. Do we want to lease the land for that purpose? And if so, then we would continue to negotiate the terms of the lease.
Do we have an existing lease with the other pole that's there?
I did not even know that there was another pole there other than I had asked if co-location had been considered. And I was also told that the co-location was not possible.
So a vote to move forward today, ultimately, we can still decide not to approve a lease at some point down the road. This is just step one in what may be three steps.
That's right. The notice on the agenda today is only sufficient that you would authorize the city manager to continue with lease negotiations with AT&amp;T.
And this may not be the precise location as talks continue with the city.
Correct.
Somewhere on this plot of ground, but it could be, end up anywhere, potentially.
AT&amp;T can confirm, but this seems to be the sweet spot for this type of structure within the city.
In general, I mean, that was gonna be my other, I guess, maybe a question for the AT&amp;T folks. Is there another non-city-owned plot of land that you've identified for placement of a tower that would be either preferable or...
Yeah, I'll talk briefly. So my name's Kellen Butler. I'm the rain engineer for AT&amp;T for this area. So when we look at these areas, we draw what we call a search ring that I give over to Troy and his team. He goes and looks at the whole area, and there's a lot of residential around here. So that limits the area quite a bit. The way our cell towers work, the further away you get from it, the not great service you're gonna get. And so we get forced to be pretty tight in. Now, a move from, you know, these two locations that have been talked about, those two are not that big a deal. But if you're talking about a half-mile move, that becomes a big deal for us. So in this location, you know, if it moves 300 feet, that's not gonna be a big deal.
But is there another non-city-owned plot of land that you've identified as potentially a site for this tower?
Not within the ring, no.
Not within the ring?
Correct.
So this general spot that the city owns is the best place to put the tower to provide the service that you need to provide to the area?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
So how many more towers do we need in Stillwater to provide 95% coverage on 5G?
So it's somewhat of a loaded question because it's an always-growing demand. And so you could kind of say, well, how many schools do you need to cover all of Stillwater? Well, maybe you have a number right now, but we're always looking ahead. We've been working on this particular site since, I think it was 2018. And we try to forecast out about three years ahead of time. So we expected that we would have the site to cover the demand that we need right now. As far as all of Stillwater, it's gonna be too hard to quantify that number right now. But I can tell you, based off our demands right now, we need the site in this particular area.
But this is a step in a bigger process of adding towers, I presume?
Yeah, so we're always adding towers, yeah.
You do have another site that you...
Sorry, we do have another site in Stillwater that's been leased zone permitted and everything else. They just hadn't started construction yet. It's 12th, we call it 12th and Perkins, but it's down the road a little bit.
But it wouldn't, that doesn't provide coverage to this area?
These will help each other, actually. Offset everybody else around them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It does seem as though, as you look at the school and having spent time at the junior high with no cellphone service and in light sadly of everything that's going on in our world right now, I think having cellphone service is really important there.
Yeah, I mean, I think from the city's perspective, we want, we need to have good cellphone coverage. I mean, this is what, and I think most people agree with that. Then there's just also the balancing act of where do you put it? So it doesn't, you know, cause problems for folks in the area. But, you know, there are regulations on a larger scale at the federal level that, you know, we can't just not let them build sites because of these sorts of things. So we have to do what we can to try to find sites that work. So it certainly makes sense to me to continue negotiating lease, to figure out where the best spot would be to put this. It seems like the existing site might be better. But, you know, we would wanna hear why this site would be better or anything like that before we approve anything finally. But I don't see why we wouldn't continue talking to them about what works.
I agree. I think continuing the lease conversation, but finding a spot between those two that causes, that does the least harm to the folks that live over there.
Does anybody have a motion on the item?
Motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate a lease with AT&amp;T for lease of property along Manning Street for installation of a monopole cellphone tower and associated equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that's approved. And we'll just note for the neighbors in the area, again, that there are still many steps to the process and many more public discussions to be had about what will happen here. Thank you all for being here. Item 8B is to approve a bid recommendation fiscal year 2022, 2023 for landscape maintenance at 21 city-owned locations. Mr. White?
Good evening. Mark White, Public Works Director. Bids were solicited for landscape maintenance at 21 city-owned locations, including buildings, the downtown area, traffic islands, and rights of way. Just for your reference, this year, we only had 17, so we added four more. This is an annual bid that has been in place for the past several years to provide upgraded landscape maintenance for highly visible areas and to reduce the landscape maintenance load on the public works employees so we can focus on street repairs, parks, sidewalks, those kind of things. Bids were solicited for a new maintenance agreement for FY '23. The bid was advertised in the news press on the city's website. And three potential bidders, we reached out to and asked them if they were interested as well. One was, and they bid, and that amount was $96,887 from Cross Timbers Landscape. Are there any questions?
Counselors?
You made eye contact with me, Mark, so I feel like you're, I have a question whether or not last time we did this, I think last year I asked if Strickland Park was included in this landscaping plan. Do you know if it's included in this one? I didn't see a list of...
I did not bring that list with me. I will make sure I get back with you and let you know. But there are 21 individual items on the bid. And so they know, like, they have to take care of the "Welcome to City of Stillwater" sign out west of Stillwater, out by Range Road. They have to, there's different things, and they'll plant flowers and do stuff like that as well, so.
How does this bid relate to what we spent on it last year?
It's more, yeah, but we had fewer sites.
Okay, so much more?
You know, the total is 96,887. I'm not sure what we spent last year. This was kind of a coordinated effort because John McClain and I think Barb Bliss handled it last year, and I inherited it this year. So this is my first year, but I can find that out as well.
But you said there were 21 items on it, so that's roughly...
Yeah, there's 21 locations, and it includes all the downtown, the corners, 10th and, you know, the roundabout, 10th and Main.
I think when we make those investments, it's so important to take care of them. And if this alleviates some staff burden on those things, it's worth it, worth it.
Further questions, or is there a motion on the item?
Yeah, motion to award the bid for the landscape maintenance to Cross Timbers Landscape.
Counselors?
Motion to approve staff recommendation for the bid landscape maintenance to Cross Timbers Landscape LLC in the amount of $96,887.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award this bid. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to 8C. Approved budget amendments appropriating $200,000 for the aviation gas resale revenue and expenditures accounts.
Good evening, councilors, vice mayor and mayor, Foster Bank A Deputy Airport Director. The airport is continuing to see a record number of operations. That includes takeoffs and landings, as well as a continued increase in fuel prices. For example, a year ago today, a load of 100 low lead avgas costs us $21,000. Today, it costs us $48,000 per load. At this time, we're projecting the need for another increase in our aviation fuel expenditure and revenue accounts to be able to sustain us for the remaining of the fiscal year. As a result, budget amendments have been prepared to increase the aviation gas for resale revenue account by 200,000, as well as the aviation gas for resale expenditure account by 200,000 as well. As a reminder, as a wholesaler of fuel, no additional city or outside funds are required to fulfill this need. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Foster. Counselors?
Just the airport bringing more money and good news.
Do you have a recommendation for us, Foster?
Recommendation to approve budget amendments increasing aviation gas for resale revenue and fuel purchases expenditure accounts by 200,000.
Thank you. Counselors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Item 8D, approve a contract amendment number two with professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn to add final design bidding and construction phase services for the new roadway at Monticello Drive.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. My name's Andy Dorflinger. I'm the deputy director of projects and construction. And tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about the College Gardens project. We are currently under contract with Kim Lee Horn as our designer. It's a design of 32,000 linear feet of water line and 25,000 linear feet of sewer line. As part of the project, we asked the designer to expedite the design of the sewer and water lines associated with or near the area of Monticello Drive. The reason that we did that was because we identified Monticello as a road that needed to be reconstructed. The issue that we've had is the wire lines and sewer line design is complete, but we haven't been able to complete the design of the roadway because of staffing. Currently, we don't have staff that can complete that design. So we're asking them to pick up that design and complete it for us. And that's what this amendment adds. So as you can see, this shows kind of the condition of the road. It's very rough if you drive across there. It talks to our strategic priority of connected spaces. The amendment will be for $89,210. And again, it'll cover the pavement and drainage design. The funds have already been appropriated with the FY '20 pavement management, and there's sufficient contingency available to cover this amendment. So with that, I'd open it up for any questions.
Counselors, any questions?
I have to confess, I have no idea where that is in town. Where is Monticello Drive?
Yeah, so it's really close to the university. I don't know if you knew where Admiral Drive is. It connects directly to that, and it's between university and Admiral.
I think maybe I've been on that street.
Yeah.
If your car...
If your car's bouncing like this...
Do you have a recommendation for us, Andy?
I sure do. Motion to approve the contract, contract amendment number two to the professional service agreement with Kim Lee Horn to add final design bidding and construction phase services for the new roadway and drainage design of Monticello Drive. The total expenditures not to exceed $89,210 as part of the College Gardens water and sewer project.
Thank you. Counselors?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, it's approved. Thank you, Andy. 8E is approve a budget amendment appropriating $1 million for health insurance expenditures. Kristi Driscoll.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. I'm here tonight to request the approval of the budget amendments totaling $1 million for movement into our self-funded health insurance plan. Those funds are being re allocated from personnel budgets due to current vacancies. Happy to answer any questions, or I have a recommended motion.
Counselors? I don't hear any questions. What's your recommendation?
Motion to approve budget amendments appropriating $1 million for health insurance expenditures and a transfer end of $1 million to the self-insurance fund from the general fund and SUA funds.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Kristi. Okay, at this time, before item nine, I'm gonna make a motion to recess the city council meeting and move over to our other meetings to take care of issues over there. So I'll move to recess city council at this time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess city council before item nine. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now in recess. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for June 6, 2022. On the consent docket, we have some regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, consent docket's approved. First up on SUA is authorize fiscal year '23 expenditures for maintenance services. Mr. Lauren Smith. Man, Lauren, you're gonna be up here for a while.
So you are. He's got his cup and everything. He's ready.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. The Stillwater Energy Center uses three Wartzilla gen sets to produce electricity. The engine's primary control system and many of the auxiliary components are manufactured by Wartzilla. The maintenance service and equipment parts can only be purchased from Wartzilla. The Grand River Dam Authority Capacity Agreement includes provisions for a payment based on availability of the gen sets. If the gen sets are not available, the capacity payment decreases, which potentially have a negative impact on revenues to the SUA. Staff is requesting approval to purchase maintenance services up to $100,000 and equipment parts up to $200,000 from Wartzilla. This will allow us to make purchases without delay. I have a motion here, but I would pause to answer any questions.
Trustees? Lauren, do we, we've approved this before or something like this before?
Every year.
This is our annual, like, we just go ahead and make sure you've got your maintenance and your parts and...
Okay. Yes, sir, since 2016. And that's important. Each engine's worth about $4,000 a day in capacity payment, $12,000 for the, for all three for the day. So it's important that we can respond very quickly to get parts and help here when we need to keep them operational.
Thank you. What's your recommendation?
Motion to authorize FY '23 expenditures for maintenance services up to $100,000 and equipment parts up to $200,000 from Wartzilla for the three 18V-50SG engine generators at the Stillwater Energy Center and approve budget amendments appropriating funds up to $300,000 from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved five to zero. Item 8B is a budget amendment appropriating $104,500 from the Rate Stabilization Fund for a required electric service at 100 West Airport Road.
Yes, good evening, Indian. Staff has received a request for electric service for a new industrial customer located at 100 West Airport Road, formerly the Total Energy Building. Is it existing electric service to the facilities require upgrades to meet the demand requirements for the company to operate at the facility? Cost estimates for the upgrades are approximately $170,500. This includes staff, labor, materials, and a new primaring metering station. This includes staff, labor, materials, and a new primaring metering station. Staff's labor costs are accounted for in the Electric O and M budget. Staff is seeking approval of a budget amendment appropriating one hundred four thousand five hundred dollars for materials and a new primary metering station. Funding for this project is available in the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund, and I have a motion here, but I would pause to answer any questions.
Lauren, is this based on a particular level of upgrade in service?
Yes, sir. So the, the requirements are up to fourteen to fifteen megawatts of service, redundant service. Each of our industrial customers have a redundant feed, so that if we had an issue on one, we could transfer them over. This upgrade is primarily to, but not to this magnitude. Our largest industrial customer is about a five megawatt load. We're looking at three times that here. And so in order to provide them either or, they could take a feed from either substation and split it, but the idea, if they had to go to all one substation, that's what's requiring us to make upgrades to the, the components on the line, the switches and the fuses and the, you know, the primary metering station to handle from six hundred amps to nine hundred amps of, of capacity.
And I would, I would assume the increase in revenue off the load more than pays for the parts to make this improvement?
It will, yes, over time.
Thank you. Trustees, further questions?
Things we're learning.
What's your recommended motion?
Motion to approve budget amendment allocating up to one hundred four thousand five hundred dollars from the Rate Stabilization Fund for upgrades, materials, and a new primary metering station to supply the required electric service to one hundred West Airport Road.
Trustees?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation, please vote. It's approved five to zero. Item C, Lauren.
Okay. The S U A contracts for high voltage line clearance, tree trimming, and tree removal services around overhead electric lines. These services, which have a direct correlation to the reliability of the electric distribution and transmission system, have traditionally been bid on a three-year cycle with the provision to extend the first-year contract on an annual basis for two additional years. On March second of two thousand and twenty, the trustees awarded the bid for these services for FY twenty-one to Davies Tree Surgery Company. Staff has been satisfied with Davies Tree Surgery Company, who has met expectations and is requesting to renew the contract for the cost shown as Schedule Three on the report. The FY twenty-three budget for electric includes funding for the recommended expenditures. And again, I have a motion here, but I will pause to answer any questions.
Trustees? What's your recommendation?
Motion to approve the third-year contract extension, authorize expenditures up to one million four hundred forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents, and authorize general manager to sign the contract documents.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. It's approved five to zero. Item D.
Okay, again, this is one of these that we do annually, similar to, to the first one I read. These are expenditure requests. The following are annual expenditure requests for FY twenty-three for the electric utility. O N G Natural Gas Transportation to the Stillwater Energy Center, not to exceed two-hundred thousand dollars. Ho-sell purchase power with G R D A, not to exceed twenty-eight million dollars. Enable natural gas transportation commodity for the Stillwater Energy Center, not to exceed two-point-three million dollars. And the annual software license and support agreement with Futura, Inc., not to, not to exceed sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars. The following motions that I have will cover items D, E, F, and G on the agenda, which directly correlate to these, these four items.
We need separate motions for each of the items.
And I have those here, but I would pause to answer any questions.
Trustees, any questions? Let's start with item D.
Okay, agenda item D, motion to approve FY twenty-three natural gas transportation expenditures in an amount not to exceed two-hundred thousand dollars for gas transportation from the Enable High Pressure Gas Line to the Stillwater Energy Center pursuant to an agreement with O N G.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Item D is approved five to zero. Item E?
Agenda item E, motion to approve FY twenty-three expenditures in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight million dollars for wholesale power purchase pursuant to an agreement with Grand River Dam Authority.
Trustees?
Motion to accept.
Go ahead. You got it.
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Item E is approved five to zero. Item F?
Okay, agenda item F, motion to approve FY twenty-three expenditures in the amount not to exceed two-point-three million dollars for Stillwater Energy Center pursuant to natural gas intrastate firm and interruptible transportation service agreement with Enable.
Trustees?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Item F is approved five to zero. Item G?
Agenda item G, motion to approve the execution of the FY twenty-three software license and support agreement with Futura, Inc., in an amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars, and authorize the general manager to sign the related documents.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Item G is approved five to zero. Thank you, Lauren. Item H is approved bid recommendation for the purchase of two new roll-off vehicles. Mr. Chris Knight. Like your tie tonight, Chris?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. You like my socks, too. Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. In September of twenty, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the trustees approved for the Waste Management Department to purchase two roll-off trucks from United Engines off of the estate contract. United Engines was notified on April twenty-seventh, and then notified me that the chassis that were being purchased for those roll-off trucks were canceled by Premier Truck in Tulsa. There's a chain supply that, there's just not enough chassis out there right now. So I contacted, those current trucks were in a buyback agreement which ends December two thousand and twenty-two. So with that point, so I reached out to the third party just to see if we could purchase our old trucks, even though we've already bought them once, but at least it'd be cheaper with the current prices are. They already have them, already had the two trucks sold and had contracts on them, so that wasn't an option. So at that point, we, we advertised a bid just to see if anyone could find some chassis to be able to fulfill this need for us, because come December, they're going to take those trucks and we wouldn't have any, and we would not be able to do our roll-off operation or move the cardboard, commercial cardboard containers that you approved a while back. So we advertised a bid in the Stillwater News Press on May seventh and posted on the Stillwater webpage. Bids were received until three P M. on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We did receive five bids. The, the bid from United Engines for the two trucks was, it, it met our needs because the December deadline is the crucial time. So we kind of, who provided us a chassis that met that need of December twentieth? And then which one was the cheapest? We only received one bid that can meet that need. We did have another one that was close, twenty-eight weeks, so that would put us about February. Any questions?
Was the February date cheaper?
Are they cheaper?
Yeah.
No.
I mean, was it cheaper if you go with the other bid that was, took longer?
Oh, no. Actually, it was more. It was like sixty thousand dollars more. So we went with, we went with the option that got us trucks in December at the cheapest amount we could.
So what is our confidence level that we will have these trucks by December?
They feel really, really good about it. They, they should be offline if we approve those tonight. They have already purchased them, to be honest with you, because they know they can sell them tomorrow if you, if you didn't, you know, approve it. So they, those trucks will be offline in October, and we should easily get those in December, from what I'm being told.
Thank you.
Further questions, trustees? What's your recommendation for us, Chris?
Approved bid recommendation for the purchase of two new roll-off vehicles from United Engines at a total purchase amount of four hundred seventy thousand dollar, four hundred seventy thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars for both roll-off vehicles with no price escalators. Authorize waste management to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Bank of America to buy roll-off vehicles. Authorize staff to enter into a buyback agreement with United Engines for the option to sell two roll-off vehicles after three years, and authorize general manager to sign all related documents.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. It's approved five to zero. Thank you, Chris. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn S U A, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the S U A is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. First up on the consent docket, we have regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Consent agenda is approved five to zero. Item five on the agenda, resolutions. Resolution CETA twenty-twenty-two, a resolution approving a redevelopment agreement, covenant agreement, and escrow agreement, assistance and development financing dispersment agreement between the city, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority and USA Rare Earth Magnets LLC and USA Rare Earth Real Estate LLC. Melissa Reams.
Good evening, trustees. It is my great pleasure to be before you this evening, presenting the redevelopment agreement between CETA and the city and USA Rare Earth. The building that is being purchased by USA Rare Earth is the old Total Energy Building at one hundred West Airport Road, and it is also the, the building that you approved the upgrade in the electrical to just a few minutes ago. The redevelopment agreement encompasses the, the total agreement between the parties, the responsibility of the redeveloper, the responsibility of CETA, and, and what comprises this agreement. I, I think we have sent you as trustees the, the total agreement, and then I also did for you in an executive summary. So it might be better for discussion if you would ask questions that you had or guide me as to what you think might be the, the important aspects of the development agreement that need to be read into the record.
Thank you, Melissa. Trustees, questions? All right.
We definitely want to talk about this. I'm just trying to think of the way, what questions we want to ask.
I guess I can, I'll, I'll start with, I guess it's not a question. I think it's just a statement for the community and for us as a council to say that what I am appreciative about this development agreement is that the money that the city is going to help put forward in this development agreement is money that will stay in the community. It is not something that is going to walk out. It is, it is an improvement to the existing structure, and in my mind, that is very important to state, that it's not just money that is, could, could leave if, for whatever reason.
No. Specific in the redevelopment agreement is the proviso that this money be used for site improvements to the Total Energy Building.
Yeah.
I have not walked the building, but the engineers that the redeveloper has hired have been out there, and it is, I think, in pretty sad shape. So there's going to be roofing that needs to be taken care of, electrical issues that need to be dealt with, probably plumbing and HVAC. It is going to be a lot of maintenance that ha, that poor little building, it's not a little building, but that building has not had, and so it suffers from the deferred maintenance. And our money, the city's money, the, the citizens' taxpayer dollars is going to go directly as an investment in the upgrades to that facility.
I just, I think that was important to point out.
Right, right. So what, you bring up a good point, Vice Mayor. One of the responsibilities for CETA and the city is to front this seven million dollar investment into the facility. And for, for us as the city organization to be able to do that, we are going to have to take out a, what I call a revenue note. It is, in all, for all intents and purposes, it's a commercial loan between the city slash CETA and one of our local banks. And so that's another piece in the puzzle that we are going to probably bring back to you next week for your consideration, is what are the terms of that lending arrangement between us and our, our local lender?
Just for sort of overall clarity's sake, I'm just going to run through this, and you can tell me if, if I'm all in the right direction here. We're talking about a facility that is currently on the books at one hundred West Airport for six...
Six-point-three million, I believe.
The purchase price will be thirty percent higher than that, I think.
At nine, nine-point-nine million is what it's listed for.
And then investments of at least seven million, actually closer to, I think, fourteen million total.
I believe, and, and David Croninfield is here this evening. He's the general counsel for USA Rare Earth, and David, I'll ask you to join me up here if you'd like. I believe, I'm going to pull up my spreadsheet so we can look at this together.
Thanks for being here, David.
I'm David Croninfeld. I'm the chief legal officer for USA Rare Earth, and I'm very happy to be here, very excited about the project. And I just want to thank all of you, the staff, Melissa, Norman. You guys have been a great pleasure to work with, and we're really excited about the project and, and being here in Stillwater.
All right. Kevin, would you mind pulling, thank you, and I'm going to try and zoom in a little bit so that you might be able to see this a little more clearly. Okay. There you go. So the base property on, the basis value on the property currently, I, I misspoke, it's six-point-one million. And it is, the total market value per the assessor's rolls is eight-point-four million. The company intends to purchase the property for nine-point-nine million. We did have an agreement with the, with USA Rare Earth, and this was in conjunction with the other taxing jurisdictions that we would not activate TIF X. And, and again, that's back to some of the action that you took back on May the sixteenth, where we amended that project plan. We would not activate TIF X until the purchase of the building was completed, so that the other taxing jurisdictions got the benefit of that jump in value.
Yep.
So phase one, are we still set at seventeen million? Little shy of seventeen million investment in improvements and equipment. My conversations with our county assessor, James Cowan, did lead me to discount those improvements in the, the calculation of appraised value. So it is not a dollar-for-dollar, a praise, a praise, an increase in appraised value when it is considered maintenance. And, and that's going to be an ongoing discussion between the company and, and the appraiser, because is a new roof maintenance? It could be. I mean, in some regards, it could be maintenance. Is completely redoing the electrical that's been there since nineteen eighty-five, is that maintenance? Or is that just a completely new addition to the building and reconfiguring the building? So those are the, the topics that we're going to be working for, for us and for the company to get as many appraisal dollars out of, of our county appraiser as we can as we move through this process. The equipment that the company brings in, and I'll let David speak to the equipment, but that's new to Oklahoma, new to Stillwater equipment. If it's used equipment, he will come in and look at the equipment and appraise it, but if it's brand-new, it, you'll have a bill of lading, and we'll be able to justify... it, you'll have a bill of lading and we'll be able to justify the value at that point in time. So I'm going to let David talk to you about the equipment and what that looks like.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. The equipment is a factory line that we acquired several years ago from a prior manufacturer that because they did not control their own supply chain, they couldn't control their cost. In particular, their, a majority of the inputs into this facility come from overseas. And they, because they could not control, uh, control the cost, they were forced to go out of business. We purchased the equipment from them. It'll be about forty truckloads, semi-truckloads of equipment that'll be brought here. And replacement value on that equipment has lead times of eighteen to twenty-four months. And we're talking in the tens of millions of dollars. That's all equipment that will be sighted at the building. As soon as we, you know, we're, we're, we've got actually employee zero already on the ground here. He is relocating here from Pennsylvania, formerly worked doing magnet production for a couple of other companies. So he is on the ground, ready to go, itching to get in that building. I walked it this morning. And you're right, Melissa, it's, it's in a sorry state of affairs and we're excited to get it up to snuff. So we'll be moving that equipment in as soon as we complete a few of the projects. And that'll, they'll all be kind of ongoing with one another. Obviously, we want to have a roof to keep rain off of that equipment. So we'll, that'll probably be the first item that we'll tackle, but I am not the guy that does the contracting, so, or the general contracting. Melissa?
So a lot of the deliverables for the redeveloper are centered around investment in the building, investment in equipment, and investment in people. They have, I'm going to minimize this one and pull up their timeline. Oh goodness, where did I have that? Well, maybe I am. Maybe I'm not. I bet I'm not. Oh, no, oh.
While you're pulling that up, I can, I can speak to some of the employment. We are looking to add over a hundred jobs by the time we're at full capacity. Obviously, that'll take a few years. We own a mine in Texas, and the mine will be supplying feedstock to the facility. And so obviously, we need to get the mine online. We're hoping to get the mine online at the same time as the facility here so that they both switch on at the same time. And we will phase up, ramp up production. But again, our, our goal is to have a hundred plus employees here in Stillwater. You know, adding tax revenue through their spending and just, we're, we're excited about employment.
And I think the median salary at full buildout was in the high fifties, and that was exclusive of benefits. So you're probably looking at sixty to seventy thousand per, per person. Some of the jobs are, are very professional type jobs. You're looking at engineers and plant managers. But you're also looking at equipment operators, which are more technical in nature. And the company has been out and visited with Levi. I don't remember, thank you. And Levi is the coordinator at Meridian who helps develop training programs for local employers. So we have that constant pipeline, if you will, of, of trained employees. So it's going to be a really great marriage there. And then we're hoping to retain some of our wonderful talent. You didn't know this about David, but he, you are, no, you're not an OSU alum. No, but you know somebody.
Who I went to law school with, who I got to see today, and he's an OSU alum.
There we go.
And so he's got four kids and, you know, would love to create opportunities for them to go to OSU and then stay here.
Right. And so they, they have, his friend has returned here to Stillwater, much like some of our counselors who moved away, and now they're back. So our hope is that we retain that talent here by having these high quality and good paying jobs. But that's one of the deliverables that will rest on the shoulders of, of USA Rare Earth.
Okay, Melissa.
I'm stopping now.
I'm just going to jump in.
Yes.
So this agreement outlines the general idea with, with the TIF in place, that ninety percent of the increment will go back to the company. It will also be used to pay down this initial seven million dollar investment with the city, right? So the TIF funding will be used to, to pay that initial loan back. All seven million dollars of those will be spent in that first seventeen million dollar tranche of, of reinvestment in the facility.
That's my understanding, yes, for the company.
All of this goes upfront into the building. And as Vice Mayor said before, to me, that is incredibly important. This is not money that's going into salaries or shareholder rev, shareholder equity or anything like that. It's being spent here on the ground in Stillwater, and it's staying here on the ground in Stillwater, uh, which is a, a major, I think, selling point for me of, of being able to, to put that money forward. Over, over the twenty-year life, twenty-five year life of the TIF.
Twenty-five year TIF, yes.
We see an overall benefit of, to the community in terms of.
We do. So again, Kevin, if you'll switch back to this workbook. Over time, you'll see right here, this is the total increment of ad valorem and personal property tax. There is no sales tax associated with a manufacturing entity as the sales tax is paid upstream by the end user. So if you want to look at the check figures, that total over twenty-five years is twenty-two point eight million dollars. Of that, starting in year six, we are going to rebate to the company sixteen point eight million dollars. We do, this, this TIF provides for, and I use six percent, it, it varies depending on the millage that's approved through the, um, the excise board. But we're looking at about one point four million going back to the school district to help with the families that are coming and hopefully bringing children with them to, to go to our public schools. And then you can see the debt service that the city is going to be responsible for is four point four million dollars. And that happens here in years one, one through five. During those five years, USA Rare Earth has qualified for the state's manufacturing ad valorem incentive. And so the state is going to make that ad valorem payment on behalf of USA Rare Earth. The city, again, the money will flow through our accounts. We're going to take that money and pay the note down as much as we can in those first five years. And then the company is going to take over in year six through year ten, or it may, it may be less than that, just depending on what the ending ba, yeah, what the ending balance is. But they're going to make a pilot payment, which pilot is an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes to the city. And then we in turn will take that money and make the payment to the bank.
With the goal being there that we're paying down that debt as quickly as possible?
Absolutely, absolutely. And our hope is that when we get to year six, we've paid down, we're hoping about three point five million dollars. Will, again, this is all projections, I think, very calculated projections, but still, you know, we have to wait for life to play out for us and see what really happens.
How many hours do you have in figuring out what this is going to look like?
I don't even want to guess. I told, I told my husband this afternoon, I said, I don't even think I'm making minimum wage right now. But I, I love this. This is wonderful.
I do think that brings up an important point, though, Mayor, in terms of the, from a transparency perspective, all the different people that have looked at these agreements, worked with us through these agreements to make sure that the city was positioning ourselves well, not only to invest with this company in their investment, hopefully in our community, but also making sure that we're, you know, responsible financially to our citizens and, and all of those things. And I, and, and also, you know, these TIFs sometimes can be challenging because it's a very difficult concept to grasp.
It is.
We, you know, when we established our TIFs here in Stillwater a couple of years ago, we did establish a, a group of folks that come together, the taxing jurisdictions that are impacted by these decisions, and those have all been included in conversations in terms of the advisory committees and things like that. So this isn't something that's, it's been vetted.
Thousands of different people's hours on this project at this point.
So that we kind of understand a life cycle of a TIF, because it is hard to wrap your mind. It, it's like we're, it's, it's almost like funny money, but it's not. It's real money. It wouldn't exist if this project doesn't go. And so if you look at this cycle, it starts in June with the county assessor establishing values. And he goes through his process where he takes those tax rolls to the excise board, and they approve and adopt. And then he turns all of that information over to the county treasurer. The county treasurer creates the bills, sends the bills out, and the first payment is due in December. You can pay all of your tax in December if you choose to. And so at that point in time, because this TIF is one entity within TIF X, we should be able to turn that money around pretty quickly. The treasurer and I will work to do that. And then we can, in year six, make that rebate quickly to the company because then in June, they're going to need to issue us that pilot payment so we can make the, the payment to the bank. So it's a circle. It's a circle of life. It just keeps going on and on and on. But one other thing I want to pick up on, Counselor Jaloski, is that this was not done lightly. This was not done in a vacuum. We have been very transparent about all of this. Mayor, Mayor Joyce chaired the, the TIF committee. We had to add two new members to that TIF committee as two had, had to roll off. And so there were nine people there with varying interests in this project reviewing with our special counsel, the Center for Economic Development Law and staff. And we, we met four times, didn't we, Mayor? And we went over every aspect. We really, there, there were some memories of, of other industries that have come to town and made these outlandish promises and failed to deliver. So there was a headwind there that we had to counter. But all in all, the committee came to the, uh, uh, realization that this, we need to take a chance on this. And it, it could be wonderful for all of us. And so that was their recommendation. Planning Commission reviewed this, and Brady, Brady Moore and I stood before that planning commission and answered questions. And so that group of five people looked at this, looked at the plan, looked at the zoning to make sure that it was according to our City of Stillwater code. And then that recommendation moved forward to you as counsel. And we held two public hearings where people could attend, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it. We had one person that attended those public hearings and spoke in favor of the, this amendment in this TIF that we're creating for the project. So there's, you're right. It hasn't been done in a vacuum, and it's not one person. It's, it's a large group of people who are passionate about Stillwater and wanting to move Stillwater forward.
I am excited about this project and the impact it's going to have on our community. But I also think it's important that as trustees, we acknowledge the fact that we're taking some risk here, too. We have borrowed money from SUA to pay, to, to fund on the front end other TIF projects. Now we're going to go out and borrow money from a bank to do front-end funding on a TIF project. And I'm comfortable with the level of risk we're taking, but we're taking some risk. We need to, I think, publicly acknowledge that. But I sort of analogize that to, again, tying back to my school board experience, lease, doing lease purchase agreements to build schools, right? Those schools are going out and borrowing money based on future tax revenue coming into the sinking fund to eventually pay off those leases, right? And this is, we're sort of essentially doing the same thing here. We're, we're borrowing money, betting on the money coming into the sink, to what, not a sinking, like coming into the general fund, and then paying off these notes.
Absolutely. And what you will see through the redevelopment agreement is that there has been, um, measures taken, probably on both sides, to protect both parties. The one thing that I, I am most comforted by is the company has assured us that they are going to pay cash for the building. Correct? And in doing that, they will allow the city to file a first mortgage against the property. And this gives us that first place in bankruptcy. Granted, if, we don't want that to happen, but if it does, we get that building back. I, this is like having a prenup. It's bad. But we get the building back, plus we get the improvements, the seven million. And we have a building that hopefully can sell for more than what we owe on the note.
I, I think it's important to point out that the, before we can access any of that seven million, we have to spend the money. So it's a dollar for dollar. We're, we're spending the money first. So you are getting the improvements to that building before we get any cash back.
Yeah, I really appreciate Counselor Clark pointing out, you know, that, that this isn't a, just normal sort of a thing. There is risk to it. We, you know, in, in our time here on council with TIFs and, and with incentives and with some of the, the, the steps we've taken over the last several years, we've, we've started to be a little bit more aggressive, started to take some of this risk to say, these, these are the things we need to do to be able to bring these facilities to our community and to, to, to see a diversified economy, to see growth in our tax base. They don't come here without this. I, I would love to hear your statement as if, if we weren't going to do this, is there any way USA Rare Earth would be in Stillwater buying this building?
It would be difficult.
I mean, you all looked at other facilities around the country.
We did.
Can you give me a ballpark of what a building like this, that was actually already in good shape, was on the market for?
Um, a lot, yeah. I wasn't on the, the specific committee that looked. We looked at over fifty properties across the country. And one of the reasons we're coming here is because of what you're doing here tonight. And then also just how the staff, how you as a city have welcomed us, and we see this as a very business-friendly community. The electrical issue, we are going to be, as you heard earlier, we're going to be a very large drawer of power. So obviously, we'll be putting money there, too. And so there were just a, a, a large number of things that, including this, made Stillwater very attractive. And a, a new build would cost probably five times, if not more, than this property.
And that, yeah, that's, that's been my understanding, is that, that this building could be purchased and renovated for less than it would cost to go buy one that was already in, in this kind of condition. And, you know, for, we talked about the fact that this money stays here. As you, as you mentioned, it's, it's money that only gets paid after you all have actually done this work. And then, and then there's the whole USA Rare Earth and, and what you're doing here in Stillwater, what this business brings to town. This is a, a Rare Earth Manufacturing Metals and Magnet Production Facility. These magnets go in electric car motors, lots of different places around our.
Cell phone.
Yep.
Any number of daily use items.
Is anybody currently doing this in the United States?
There, people are trying, but no one is doing it.
It's all being done in China for now.
That's correct.
As far as we know.
That's correct.
So this is a, a project that has been, or, or a, a manufacturing line that has been, the Department of Defense, the Department of Energy have put a lot of time and effort into bringing these kinds of projects back to the US. I think this is going to be a, a major, uh, this is a major win for not just Stillwater, for the state of Oklahoma, but for the entire country with bringing, you know, as you mentioned, the, the business that couldn't use these machines because they didn't have a local supply chain. You have a local supply chain with a, a mine here in the US. For all those reasons, that risk that we talk about, yes, the city is, is taking some risk. And a seven million dollar loan is, is really not that much risk from, from, from our perspective. It is some. But it also is being offset by the benefits of bringing a, a business like this to our community, not only for what it does, but for what it brings in terms of jobs, in, in terms of diversified economy and all those sorts of things. So I, I think it's really exciting. I, I know that, that there are, you know, are always going to be folks who have questions and want to know why exactly we're doing it this way, and what about this, and what about the risk? I've always been happy, I know everyone on the council has always been happy to sit down and answer those questions from people as they come up. But I, I can't tell you how exciting it is to, to have gotten to this point, so much time and effort and work by people. So much time and effort and work by people to be able to sit down and say, let's do this and let's get this project going. And let's see this manufacturing happen in our country and let's see it happen in our city. I'm excited about it. All right, well, we have a resolution on the agenda, 2022-2, which is the one we're talking about right now, which is approving the redevelopment agreement. And I'll just ask the trustees at this point if there's any further questions regarding this resolution for staff or for our representatives.
Could I ask, David, are you going to be here when our meeting is concluded? Are you going to run out the door?
No, I'm not going to run out the door. No.
Okay.
Just like the company, we intend to be here a long time. So I will be here.
I'm representing, I guess, the trustees on a podcast tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, I'd like to talk to you about what I can or can't say.
Happy to discuss that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, is there a motion or is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution CETA-2022-2.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The motion that resolution's approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolution CETA, this is item 5B on the agenda, is resolution CETA 2022-1, which is a resolution authorizing the borrowing of funds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7 million, authorizing the issuance of tax apportionment obligations, waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of the notes included in connection with the tax apportionment obligations. Excuse me. Authorizing assistance in development financing, approving and authorizing the chairman or vice chairman of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority to approve, finalize, execute, modify and/or deliver the necessary and appropriate transactional documents. All authorizations hereunder being in accordance with the authorizations of the city council. Melissa.
This resolution just gives staff the ability to move forward with finalizing that borrowing between the city. And when I use the term city, I'm including CETA and all of that. And the local bank. We did just this afternoon agree in principle what those terms are going to be. And we hope to bring that back to you next week so that you will have a chance again at that point in time to review and give your opinion on that loan. So you still, you know, if something changes, you still have the opportunity at that point to tell staff, no, this is not the type of loan situation we want to enter into. You would direct staff to go back out into the marketplace and find some different type of borrowing.
Thank you, Melissa. Trustees, are there questions about the resolution? Is there a motion?
Before we do that, I just want to verify that on the resolution, the mayor will be signing that the dates have been updated? Is that taken care of?
The dates have been updated, yes. Thank you.
Good catch. Further questions or a motion?
Motion to accept resolution number CETA-2022-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The resolution's adopted by a vote of five to zero. Are there any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn CETA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn the CETA meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we're now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. We were previously recessed before item nine. Item nine on the Stillwater City Council meeting is a resolution. This is resolution CC-2022-15. This is the sister resolution of what we just discussed in CETA. This is a resolution of the city council of the City of Stillwater concurring with the Stillwater Economic Development Authority's approval of the redevelopment agreement, covenant agreement and escrow agreement, assistance in development financing dispersment agreement between the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, USA Rare Earth Magnets LLC and USA Rare Earth Real Estate LLC, approving indebtedness of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority in a principal amount not to exceed $7 million in tax apportionment obligations, waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of the notes issued in connection with the tax apportionment obligations, authorizing the pledge of apportioned tax increments and authorizing other matters related thereto. Questions, comments or a motion on the resolution?
The dates on this resolution are updated also?
That is correct.
Thank you. Then I move approval of resolution CC-2022-15.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. All right, reports from officers and boards. Ms. Carnley.
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 307b4 involving confidential communication between the city council and the city attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim or action involving R.R. Donnelly. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Carnley. Melissa.
We just want to remind everybody that we have started new city hall hours. And city hall is going to be open now to the public at 7:30 in the morning and we will not shut the doors at 5:00. We're going to be open until 5:30. And I think we're three days into this and we're already, staff is already loving the benefit of this. They loved having Friday afternoon off. I was visiting with one of our employees and she said it just helped her decompress so much better because of that, just four hours on Friday afternoon. So we are, but we want to hear from citizens. We want to make sure that this pilot program meets the needs of not only staff, but our citizens as well. And so if you will go out to speak up Stillwater and the address is speakup.stillwater.org and you can provide your feedback there on the project page, that's city hall new hours. And we'd love to hear from you.
Please, yeah, let us know. Let us know if that's a good plan and if it works for you, we want to make sure that we get that right. Vice Mayor.
Yes, the City of Stillwater would like to encourage everyone to shop and dine in Stillwater this summer. Every Friday in June is Shop Until Dark. Many retailers and restaurants are staying open later to enjoy the longer days. On June 17th, those special hours will coincide with the third Friday Art Walk in downtown Stillwater. To see a full list of participating businesses and other great events, go to stillwater.org/shopSwo. And I can't say how important it is for us to support our local businesses. And the summertime is a perfect time to stroll in downtown Stillwater and other areas and support these businesses, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Hawkins.
The Enchantment Under the Sea Dance is just around the corner. This family fun event will be held at the Stillwater Public Library on Friday, June 17th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. There will be live entertainment, crafts, a bounce house, a snow cone truck and more. Tickets must be purchased ahead of time. Visit tickets.stillwater.org to learn how you can purchase yours today.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Jaloski.
Stillwater Community United's annual Juneteenth celebration will be at Southern Woods Park on Saturday, June 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All community members are invited to gather for free entertainment and activities for the whole family. There will be games with prizes, bouncy houses are popular apparently, bouncy houses, music, food trucks and more. To learn more about the history of Juneteenth, go to library.stillwater.org or visit Stillwater Community United's Facebook page. So really important opportunity to gather with this part of our community.
Yep, absolutely.
Counselor Clark. The Payne County Health Department is conducting a countywide community health needs survey. The anonymous survey will guide planning and action to improve the health of residents who live, work and play in our community and provide the foundation for improving and promoting good health. The survey can be accessed through the Payne County Health Department's Facebook page or you can contact the Health Department directly for a paper copy. And Mayor, if I may, I'd like to move off script for just a second.
Please.
We've been working toward digital packets for our meetings. And I just want to thank Patty Osmus and Brad Stewart and anybody else on staff that's been involved in this. The packet we received is terrific and I just really appreciate all the work that was done.
And I'm even sort of using it almost seamlessly. I love it.
Me, too.
All right, well, I don't have anything to announce tonight. So that will take us to item 12, which is executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the purposes requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session.
Hello? Is there a motion to return to, um, normal city council session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second to return to the regular session. Please vote or start.
Yes.
Councilor Jalowski?
Yes.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
With the vote of five to zero, we'll now return to regular session. There's no recommended action on executive session. Anyone have recommended action?
No action.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Jalowski?
Yes.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
Still order city council is now adjourned with a vote of five to zero.